For the Monday, December 9th, meeting of the Chicopee School Committee. Please join me in a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, one nation under God, with liberty and justice.
In compliance with open meeting laws, we are right now live and future broadcasting this meeting on public television. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone for a moment of silence. We'll observe that for all those who serve in the military and for all those who protect us. Thank you. Sarah, can we take a roll call, please?
Mayor View?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Barcello?
Present.
Mr. Douth?
Here.
Mrs. Perret? Mrs. Schofield?
Here.
Mr. Schumsky?
Here.
Mr. Lamoth?
Here.
Mr. Gerard?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mrs. Loebz?
Present.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven present, one absent.
Thank you. We'll go to public announcements by committee members, and I'll start to my left. Don?
Well, I wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Grace?
Yes, I know this time of year, many of the schools are having, creating experiences for the children to have breakfast with Santas and activities and crafts. And I had the opportunity to visit Fairview's event. The staff there did an amazing job. I just wanted to commend them, where they had different crafts and activities for the students to do and also visit with Santa. And also had the opportunity to visit Comp's winter concert, which was phenomenal. So hats off to Ms. Boazek and Mr. Kerr and all the students that did an outstanding job. Unfortunately, I didn't get to go to highs, but I heard that it was also amazing. But I want to just commend everybody.
Thank you, Grace. Sam?
Yes, I just want to echo my colleagues' compliments on Fairview and Chicopee Comp. They both, the students, teachers, and staff did an amazing job at those events. And I also wanted to let everybody know that last Wednesday, I was invited to a meeting hosted by Captain Cody. In the meeting was Litwin, Sunshine Village, the Transportation Services, and the Chicopee Police to discuss the traffic problem in the Litwin School Neighborhood. I wanted to reassure residents that we're working on all fronts as it's a community issue. And finally, on Saturday, I was humbled to be a participant in the Reefs Across America to honor the men and women who sacrificed their lives and for those who served in the military. It's a reminder that all gave some and some gave all. Merry Christmas and happy holidays to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Chat?
Yes. Merry Christmas from home.
Thank you. We'll go to my right. Doug?
Yes, I would like to also wish everyone a safe and happy and healthy holiday season with your loved ones. Hopefully, you can relax and enjoy the Christmas season. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Mary. Just like to wish all of our students and staff and community members a safe and happy Christmas. And for those celebrating Hanukkah, happy Hanukkah. I'd just like to note that tonight on the agenda, under the Personnel Action, my sister was recently hired as a substitute teacher within the district, so I'd like to say congratulations to her. I'm very proud of you. And, you know, I know that you didn't go for education as your final major, but, you know, it's a challenge and a rewarding process in its own right, so congratulations. Katie?
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of echo the sentiments. Obviously, there's been a lot of great opportunities to engage with our schools, with our students, lots of different programs going on this time of year. As we all know, obviously, it's a very busy and hectic time for most, having two young children at home, not able to participate in everything as much as I would like to. However, you know, seeing that these events are happening is a fantastic thing. And just want to echo the sentiments of a very Merry Christmas, a happy holiday season to all of our staff, students, and constituents of the city of Chicopee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Just a safe and happy holidays. Wishes go out to all out there, because everybody else already said what I would say. Thank you.
And David?
I'm all set, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I too would like to echo the sentiments of the members of the school committee and wish everyone a happy, safe, and healthy Christmas and holiday season and a prosperous new year. And now we'll go to the superintendent for public announcement.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple announcements tonight. First up, it's my pleasure to inform you that Claudia Powerman, teacher, librarian at First Sergeant Kevin A. Dupont Memorial Middle School, has been chosen to serve as the West Area Co-Director on the 2022-23 Executive Board of the Massachusetts School Library Association. So congratulations. And MSLA will help, with the help of the committed members like Claudia Powerman, works diligently to help continue to provide excellent school library services to all of our students in Chicopee. So congratulations, Ms. Powerman. Also, I'd like to announce that we had a phone call last week with MSBA, and we were informed that they will be pushing forward our application to Anna E. Berry Elementary School to the board meeting, which is on 12/21/2022. If we're invited to participate, we, the Chicopee Public Schools, will be ready to accept and participate in the grant program and move forward. So just want everybody to know that. We have the board meeting on the 21st. And lastly, I wanted to talk about parents. Last week, you have received notification about an updated Chicopee Athletic Spectator Protocol for winter sports. So you got notification last Thursday, and you probably received information today for our sporting events, just to let people know that we want to make sure it's a safe and enjoyable environment for all our spectators and for our public. So with your cooperation, hopefully you can cooperate with us for these changes that we're bringing forward. One of the things we are doing is electronic ticketing. We started that last Thursday at the Chicopee High School Boys Basketball Game. We will be actually doing electronic ticketing for all boys and girls' basketball events for the winter season. And ticket passes may be revoked for any time, for any staff, for by staff, event staff, for any unsafe, unruly, or unsportsmanlike behavior before, during, or after events without notification. Also, the public is, in the interest of safety, the individuals attending Chicopee Public Schools Sporting Events, attendings could be required to be screened by metal detectors and/or wands prior to entering the school facility or gymnasium. And failure to be screened will result in denial of admission to the event. And children eighth grade or younger must be accompanied by an adult. And we have increased crowd support personnel and additional safety managers, so we'll have more staff at our games, too, to make sure we have crowd support and crowd control. So you've been receiving this information. You received it via text, email, through Ramon and our School Brains notification. And lastly, I just wanted to wish all our students, all our staff members, and all our families a safe and healthy holiday season. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alvin. Sure. Doug?
I just had a question. I understand we're doing this for the basketball games. Is there any new protocol in place for the hockey games over at?
Fitzpatrick.
Fitzpatrick or Blunt Park?
We will have additional police presence and more crowd.
Very good. One of the things I just want to mention, Alvin, if I may, is that there's going to be a sportsmanship banner in each of the gyms in Western Mass. The banner will read, "Fans should be loud, proud, and always positive. Sportsmanship is the expectation. Let the players play. Let the coaches coach. Let the officials officiate. We are the West." I like that. So I thought I'd share it. Not the best, the West. We do not have any open public input. No one had signed up today. There's no one here for public input, so we'll go right to our visitors.
We have the Student Advisory Council tonight.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Good evening, esteemed school committee members, Superintendent Morton, Assistant Superintendent Francis, and fellow community members. My name is Joel Forsen, and I'm the President of the Student Advisory Council. I'm here alongside Mr. Bouye and Caitlin Jenko. This year, we've collaborated with the Assessment Committee to develop a survey for parents, students, and staff regarding midterms and finals. We plan for this survey to go out after the holidays. It details questions such as which test method is most effective, if these assessments should be required, and general opinions about midterms and finals. Additionally, we've been working on suggestions for school lunch, such as catering to more different diets amongst other items. Any questions?
Any questions? Susan?
When it comes to more suggestions for student lunches, would you be willing to work with our Director of Food Services, Mrs. Melanie Wilk?
Yeah, we'd be willing to work with her alongside Chicopee Fresh to cater to, you know, more diets within the school.
It sounds like a really interesting, good project to work on. So I commend you for making, perhaps making it better and more fun for the students. So I look forward to your feedback.
Thank you.
What you learn from everyone. Yeah, thanks. Thanks for working on that. Thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you. Any other discussion from any of the school committee members? Well, thank you to the Student Advisory Council for coming tonight, and we really appreciate your input. Thank you. We have approval in minutes 22-12-9.
Move that the minutes of the regular meeting of the school committee held on December 7, 2022, be approved.
Susan, get a motion.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Ron? Oh, I thought I saw you. No discussion. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. New Business, 22-12-11. Oh, I'm sorry. Reports, 22-12-10.
We have two retirements. The first one is Tracy Lee Hamlin. She's a special education paraprofessional at Zatella, 15 years, four months. Tracy Hamlin has been a special needs paraprofessional at Zatella since 2007, has worked with our most needy students. She is always smiling, joking, and upbeat. She is natural with students, and they all want to please her. Tracy is loved by her colleagues. She will be greatly missed and hard to replace. Thank you, Tracy. Elizabeth Ralston, special education paraprofessional at Chicopee Comprehensive High School, 21 years, five months. Elizabeth Ralston has been dedicated staff member working as a paraprofessional at Chicopee Comprehensive High School for over 20 years. She has worked alongside our special education students in many different roles over this time. Elizabeth has always been willing to provide support to areas in need. Her positive demeanor and her strong connections with students will be missed greatly as she retires on December 23, 2022. We want to wish her well in her next phase of life. Thank you both for your services to the Chicopee Public Schools and their families.
Thank you. Just for our viewing audience, that was the report on Personnel Action taken. Any other discussion or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to New Business, 22-12-11.
Move that the transfer of prior-year funds to cover additional positions in various schools be approved.
Don?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Any discussion? Susan?
I've asked the superintendent to give us an explanation, please, for this transfer of funds.
So we're asking for prior allocation of prior-year funds for $1,40,474. Looking at two BCBA's, Desigual, that's more so to support teachers in the classroom, special education classrooms. Three behavior intervention instances to provide support, behavioral also, too. And both these positions are more so to support teachers and provide an extra tool in the tool belt for teachers and other staff, because students have come back from remote learning more dysregulated than ever, and we're trying to provide some type of strategies and services that we can be on the preventative end, as opposed to the fact of trying to get to the discipline end, and maybe take some of the load off some of the administrators within the building for those two positions. One VP at Chicopee High and one VP at Comp, we're trying to try that out for a year and a half and see whether or not they can make a difference with the dysregulation of students, and maybe can add some more hands to the pile, so to speak, when it comes to discipline matters or behavior matters within both those high schools. Adjustment counselors, social workers, we've got them in the middle schools. Both middle schools have them. Our alternative school has them. Both our high schools have them, and I think we need them on the elementary school, because we're seeing more and more social, emotional, mental health issues exhibited at early age on the elementary levels. And we feel as though we have three social workers can actually divide up the elementary schools and provide the services that are needed, besides the services that are provided by the school counselor, along with outside service agencies that come into the school, and try to be on the preventative end also, too. And then next, in the substance abuse teacher, more and more kids are starting to self-medicate with social, emotional, mental health issues. I think that's something the kids may have got into habits during remote learning. We're trying to be on that preventative end. We have one substance abuse prevention specialist within the district. It's hard for one individual to cover all 15 schools. So therefore, we're trying to divide the district up, maybe secondary and middle school, or just divide the schools up to make sure we have the services to provide. And it's also an alternative to suspension, having a substance abuse prevention specialist to make sure that, you know, these kids are getting the services that they need, as opposed to suspension, which is not going to work for somebody that's having substance issues. We need to make sure we can educate and provide services within the school. And the rest of the positions, one sped teacher, three sped pairs, one ELL teacher in three sped pairs at Zatella, all based upon enrollment in need, because enrollment of students that have moved into the district, from that perspective. Those are based upon enrollment numbers.
Any other questions? Sure. David?
Alvin, with the proliferation of fentanyl and opioids crossing the border on a daily basis, it's becoming epidemic. I mean, it was epidemic. It's just getting worse on a daily basis. Is Narcan available in the schools in case of an emergency?
Yes, we do have Narcan in the schools. We do.
I just want to, thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
We have not had to use it, but we do have it.
All right. Well, it better safe. Thank you, Alvin.
All set, David?
Yes, thanks.
Don?
If this is approved tonight, when do you expect to post ASAP?
We will probably post after the first of the year, yes. Definitely have something in place before the end of January for these positions.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Sam?
Yes, I just have a question. It's why we're using prior-year funds instead of ESAR?
Because ESAR ends at some point, and therefore, this will be a funding cliff. And if these positions are needed over a long-term period of time, then actual prior-year funds is already built into the budget, and the budget will support these positions for the longitudinal view of the situation, as opposed to a short-term fix.
Okay.
Tim?
Thank you. So I know that there was discussion last meeting about the job descriptions for some of these. Do we have the job descriptions already drafted up? Are we just waiting on school committee approval, or where are we at with those?
All the job descriptions, except for the behaviors, which I think we included in this, have already been previously approved by school committee.
Sure. Don, second time.
Yeah, I'd like to go back to what Mr. Schumsky said. Couldn't we spike out an area in the budget that, basically, this is what we need to spend when ESAR ends and use ESAR funds before we lose them?
Correct. I think the hard part is to budget, using ESAR funds, looking at, if certain things come to play, ESAR funds will be available for some of these positions. We're just waiting to see if other things, other dominos fall. So I understand what you're saying. And to answer your question, if those things do not play out the way we want them to play out, then obviously, we can use those ESAR funds in order to plug the holes and pay for these things for the first couple of years.
If you just block out a, down below what you're going to need in the budget.
Or we can use some of the federal entitlement grants we can use for the purposes, if it's entitled on schools. But we wanted to make sure that for these things, especially if they're going to be for the long haul, that they're allocated for, for future budgets to come forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the school committee? This is a financial order. We'll take a roll call.
Mr. Schumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries. 22-12-12.
Move that the bills warrant S. 120922 totaling $338,289.85 be approved.
Grace, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Chat, could you read the warrants into the official record, please?
I will. We have a total of, John Myorecki, our Director of Budget and Finance, has submitted, we have two warrants totaling $1,758,64. I will read the total, as opposed to both warrants. The total of athletics is $18,615. Food services, $156,160. General education, $258,341. Reimbursements, $185. Student activities, $4,006. Sales tax, $736. For a total of $1,758,64.
Any discussion on the warrants? Just for clarity, we'll be voting on the first warrant. That's S. 120922 for $338,289.85. Sarah, can we take a roll call?
Mr. Schumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries. 22-12-13.
Move that the bills warrant S. 121622 totaling $1,419,773.91 be approved.
Sam, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Can I have a question first?
No, you can do that first.
Oh, motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Any discussion?
Yes. I just have a question on one of the line items. There was a, for Chromebook parts, it was $157,000.
Was your mic on?
Yeah. One of the line items was $157,000 for Chromebook parts. I was wondering if maybe we can get more information emailed to me, so I can address, just so I can, I'm kind of curious about that.
The Chromebook parts?
Yeah.
Okay. So did you want to make a motion to, as a school committee, to support that request?
Sure.
Okay. So your motion is to have information regarding the Chromebook parts?
We have to vote on the motion on the floor first.
We can take the second one first, and then we'll go back to the first one.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion and more, so we have more elaboration on that specific line item.
Any further discussion on that line item? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll go back to the original motion, which was to approve the warrant.
Yes.
Any discussion on the warrant? Chat already read them into the record. We'll take a roll call.
Mr. Schumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries. 22-12-14.
Move that the updated job description, behavior intervention is approved.
Chat, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All right. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 22-12-15.
A topic of discussion, Superintendent Search Timeline requested by school committee member Ronald Bernard.
Ron Bernard, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just had a question. I know we're on the, I'm on the search committee for the superintendent. And in our last meeting, the MSCA organization had said to us that we weren't even looking at site visits till the end of January. And correct me, Mr. Mayor and anyone else in the committee, if I heard that wrong or read that wrong. I think that's what they said.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Mr. Lamoth?
Don, can you elaborate more than I can?
Yes, I talked to Ms. LaFawn tonight. I asked, well, actually, at our last meeting, I asked her about it. And she said that we can visit the schools prior to interviewing the finalists once the finalists are announced. And it's a matter of the school committee deciding when they want to go visit. So we don't have to wait until the 20th to go. Once we announce our finalists, we can schedule with the finalists to go. So we could actually do that before the 20th.
Right. That was, thanks, Mr. Lamoth. That was my question. I figured I'd like to see it, you know, move a little quicker than that, because we have some outstanding candidates. We'd hate to lose them to another district, things like that. I mean, I don't know how soon we can do it. This is kind of new to me also. Some of you may have been on this before for previous searches. And I was kind of looking at, it might not be a bad idea to do a, if we can organize the searches for the week after, we get, the week that we get back from school, from holidays, because I think you want to search the schools or do your search for a possibility of a new superintendent during times that are kind of tough, rather than when times are easy. And all of us that have worked in the schools know that the week after holidays is tough. So that's going to kind of see them in action, like how do they handle situations during tougher times than easy times. I didn't know if that's a possibility. I don't know what, how the timelines are going to work. I know some of you have been through this before. So that was just my question. I didn't know how, if that's even possible, we could do that. So I didn't know if, like, the school committee as a whole, do we have the option of setting the timeline, or are we following just the suggestions of the MSCA? So that's just my question tonight.
Sorry, Ron. I thought you were going to share a timeline with us. I apologize. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees will guide us through that, you're saying, tours of each district of those who applied. Correct is what you're concerning.
Okay. I did kind of put out a timeline. I didn't know if you needed that.
Yeah. So the end of January will be as a school committee starting interviews. But as for the site visits to their districts, we'll take guidance from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. I don't have any dates set. Don, are you familiar with any dates?
I would like to recommend to Liz LaFawn that we schedule in between the 10th and the 20th, so that by the time we interview, we've been to these sites. So we should get back to Ms. LaFawn and tell her that we want to go somewhere between the 10th and the 20th. And she'll schedule them up for us, I guess.
As chairman, I'll make that recommendation. Would you like to vote on that? So we want to make a motion that we try to schedule the site visits for the superintendent's search to their particular districts. Is that a friendly motion for you?
Could you repeat the dates on that, Ms. LaFawn?
From the 10th. We don't have to do that. I would make a recommendation that we schedule an interview or schedule site visits between the 10th and the 20th. What she said is we could go on the day of the interview, but I think there's too many to visit on the day of the interview. And I'd like to go, starting the 10th, schedule one with each of the finalists, so that we have time to go, talk about it. So I would like to make that motion that we go between the 10th and the 20th. go between the 10th and the 20th.
So that's the motion. Does someone want to second the motion? Because I don't. I don't think it's, okay. The motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Ron?
So if we have the 10th to the 20th, then after that, we need to get a report from the people that are on that, that subcommittee, report to us their findings. Then we have to schedule the interviews after that. I believe that.
I'm sorry, Ron, but I think what's on the agenda, and just for clarity, I'm going to ask the attorney. You talked about you wanted superintendent's search a timeline, but I think we're getting to very specific information on how to proceed with the process, and I don't think that's within what you're asking us for tonight. We don't have that information, and the person who's given us guidance from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees is not here. So I'm not comfortable with picking dates and things, and that's why, Don, I would be opposed.
What I'm saying is between the 10th and, well, make it the 19th, between the 10th and the 19th, so that we have a chance to go and visit the schools. She can schedule them. She can tell us what she can work out. I can't see us visiting three finalists on the same day.
Okay. I'd like to stick with the agenda of what we spoke to about that day, and, Don, I'm not sure why that 10-day window is so important. Ron, third time and final time.
Okay. Yeah, I only questioned it because I remember, well, the last meeting, I asked her about it, because she said something about the end of the month, and never gave me an answer why we couldn't do it sooner. So that's why I questioned with us, is can we even do it sooner? So that's all. That's the only question I have.
Just for clarity, Ron, you're referring to the select, the search committee, not the school committee. That your last search committee meeting, you had asked our designee from the Massachusetts Association, just for clarity for the viewing audience, because I think that, I don't want to combine those into two, those two meetings into one entity.
Yeah, you have it correct.
There's a search committee that's going to narrow down the number of candidates to who the school committee will then choose from, correct?
Yes.
And you want that timeline, and I don't think that information is here right now.
Okay.
I'm not comfortable, Don, taking a vote on it, the school committee.
Make the motion on the 3rd, then. That's all.
Okay. Does everyone agree? Thank you. Any other, we'll turn to new business. Any new business from any members of the school committee?
Can you put that on the agenda, please?
So new businesses, you'd like to create a schedule for site visits?
I'd like to put it on the agenda, so that it's on the agenda, so we can bring it up and talk about it.
Perfect. Thank you. Sam, new business?
Yeah, I would just like to move that we possibly put in updating our facilities into our facilities subcommittee. So we would like bookshelves and books at a library, stuff like that, if we can move that into subcommittee to discuss that.
Okay. So you want to put that on the agenda to send to subcommittee for the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And new business, anyone else on my left? New business continued on my right. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor. I also have a topic I'd like to put on the agenda for next meeting, if it's possible. It's regarding a safety issue on the backside of Chickaby Comp High School on Summit Avenue. During games that are very populated, there's a stop sign there. People are blowing through the stop sign, and a bunch of people park back there. So I'd just like to talk about it and see if there's something we can do to slow down the traffic.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right? Okay. We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for joining us, everyone. Have a good night, and again, happy holidays.